Let's bring this meeting to order, please. Welcome to Scioto Township Board of Trustees. Regular meeting, May 27, 7:00 PM. Is it what time?
7:00 PM.
Oh, 7:00 PM, okay, we're right in time, that's great. Roll call, please.
Carrie?
Present.
Yapel?
Present.
Flintoft, present. Brant, absent. Noel? Reed?
Present.
Riser?
Present.
We have Quorum, also present is Office Coordinator Kristy Akin, Township Attorney Mariah Fain.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance, we are the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, for God, in his will, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. Yes. Are there any trustee?
One addition, if I may. I would like to give a moment or two for our possible new member for the LPC, Mary Beth, to speak to us during, what would that be, special topics?
Sure. I'm sorry, what, Mary Beth, what's her last name again?
Lynch.
Yeah, there it is, okay. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, just two proposed changes, one, just to label K5 as possible action to conform with our rules of order, and second, to move N1 to the end of the meeting after 08. So we would do 08 and then N1, both of which I anticipate we would go into closed session for.
And N1 was at the unfinished business at the top because of the last meeting we went over, so per rules of order, we were supposed to, but it's up to the board.
I would support that, since we're going to be in closed session, we get to have one closed session to begin.
Okay. So move, move to?
Move to 09?
Or oh, just?
We would keep it as N1, just after 08.
Okay, and I have a, oh, did you have another? I would like to table the project manager's job description until the next meeting, please.
Where?
Oh, it's under 03.
Okay.
The other two are fine.
The pause on for one minute?
Mm-hmm.
But still proceed with the other two?
Yes.
I'd support that.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I move the adoption of the agenda as amended, support.
Did you? Mm-hmm, okay. Oh, and Cheryl did request that we state out loud who?
Sure, motion by Riser, support by Reed.
It helps her. All right. Oh, no, that's fine, I guess, um, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Per our rules of order tonight, we're starting with myself. Flintoft, yes, Brant, I mean, excuse me, Flintoft, yes, Noel? Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yapel?
Yes.
Agenda adopted as amended 6-0.
Great, thank you. The next is E, declaration of conflict. There is, yeah, let's see, 06, attorney fees for the legal issue that I am based with here at the township. So I am requesting to recuse myself.
That's right. Thank you.
From the vote.
Do we vote on that now, or do we?
Well, we typically vote on it later.
Okay.
Okay, so I just declare it and then we move on? It's kind of weird. All right. So next is, oh, anybody else have a declaration of conflict for anything?
Anything comes up.
All right. Correspondence is received. Anything else that came in?
A couple other items came in related to, I think we had about three items the board saw related to, from Parkwood residents, related to Aubrey's Grove, and another item that came in late this afternoon, related to governance issues, and those will be included in the next published packet.
In the next packet, all right. Well, next is special topics. Mary Beth Lynch and trustee Reed, would you? Thank you.
I can forward.
Please. This is Mary Beth Lynch. She applied for the open LPC position, and she and I met and talked, and she has a very interesting background, but try to keep it for a couple of minutes.
Thanks.
She could, she could go on for?
I could talk fast.
I see, okay.
Thank you.
Hi, so obviously, Mary Beth Lynch moved to Scioto Township three years ago. I was, I'm actually originally from Dearborn, Michigan, where I was a city commissioner for 15 years, and I was involved, I was really involved with my city, and I got married at age 40 and moved to China the same week.
Wow.
Where it gets interesting. My husband was with Ford Motor Company, we followed his career from China to Brazil, to Mexico, to South Africa, and then we moved back here, our son to go to high school. He was born while we were living in China, so our son graduated last year at this time from here on, and I'm official empty nester, and I wanted to get involved in something, and I saw I'm very involved with nature, and I'm actually a photographic ambassador for Washington Parks. And so, yeah, I wanted to get involved, and I saw this and opportunity, and here I am. So that, that was quick.
That was quick, yeah. That, that took us an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure the details were fascinating.
Oh, it's best.
Well, thank you for introducing yourself, yeah, this is.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
It's on the consent agenda.
Yeah, oh, it is, yeah.
It is proposed for approval on the consent agenda, please.
Okay.
Thank you for your service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Now is the time for public comments, this is the time for members of the public to speak to the Board of Trustees for up to five minutes on any matter. We, we begin with anybody that's in person, please come up to the table.
Barlow, Parkwood low density. We have anticipated that you folks are going to be in a meeting earlier than this, but I didn't see you filing into the building, so I'm going to paraphrase my email that was sent to you last Friday, and I'm just going to note several points for your consideration. From the outset, our group has been relegated to three-minute Tuesday sessions before the BOT. Therein, there's been no admittance to the negotiating table. Parkwood, only the Parkwood HOA, the Township Planner, OHM, and the developer was at that table. Beyond our long-term dedication, our group's strength was demonstrated in a November 22 Eagle hearing petition. Over 62% of Parkwood residents signed that document. Last September, the BOT voted to not approve 21021, based on a strongly written resolution to deny. In the lead-up to that justified denial, our group submitted a document titled 27 Reasons Not to Approve. While we are certainly not privy to any talks that have recently occurred, those 27 reasons remain tall in our mind. Prime among those reasons is the critical need for Parkwood residents to exercise their democratic voting right, as guaranteed in our bylaws. It is stipulated therein for any easement, that a 67% co-owner approval vote is required. To date, an adamant HOA has denied that self-determining vote. On February 20th, the Township Attorney submitted a brief to the county court outlining the numerous reasons why the BOT vote was valid and above reproach. Please read that thoughtfully excellent document. We are a group long dedicated to a neighborly low-density, example for that would be like 12 to 14 units. Ours is not a NIMBY cause, and we ask that you choose, that you please consider the voice that has never been allowed to sit at the table. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else present? Would like to speak?
Cam Boyd, a Scioto resident, Scioto community newsletter, Scioto government watchdog. As trustee Brant isn't here, I will still read my comments directed to her. In the last board meeting, you said, "I emailed Supervisor Carrie stating that invoices present will not pass an audit and represents lack of internal controls. Did you consult with our auditors to confirm that the way the invoices had been presented would be a future problem? Whom did you speak with? Did they confirm your concerns? Did you present those professional opinions from our auditors to, in your email, to Supervisor Carrie? Who put you in charge of policing Supervisor Carrie? Where in the previous board minutes did it give you the authority to take this direction? Regarding the infamous MOU, you also said, 'I held a meeting with Judy Monk and Ryan Yapel to discuss Supervisor Carrie's attorney fees. Judy Monk volunteered to be the spokesperson for our small group. Did you get board approval to create this MOU document? I don't seem to remember hearing that you and Treasurer Yapel were tasked with this duty. Where in the board minutes did it give you both the authority to create this document? I recently spoke with previous trustee Monk. Because she is no longer here to agree or disagree with how you portray what she said or didn't say, I would recommend you never use her name to justify anything having to do with the MOU.'" Trustee Noel, in the last meeting, in responding to some of my public comments, you said, "Well, you didn't reach out to me, it's like, well, when I reach out to people, I want to know that they're going to attempt to listen to me and understand my position." That's a quote. "And I have not felt like there's been an impartial audience. When in the past have I not ever listened to you and your position with respect on a one-on-one conversation? I've been asking for the issues that have seemingly made Supervisor Carrie bad at her job. You have yet to articulate in all these months what she has done to damage this township with her actions. Your words spoke of needing to be respected, but this is not about you. This is about Supervisor Carrie and the supposed wrongs she has done, but I never get a straight answer. I hear you talking about your feelings. As a trustee of this township, it is not about your feelings, it's about answering the questions from residents who in the past have fought battles for you, who are now royally pissed off at your lack of provable accusations." Clerk Flintoff, does this board have a code of ethical conduct? Probably not. MichiganTownship.org, of which I have given each of you a column, is sorely needed in this township. Let me read a few sentences. 3.1 Code of Ethic Conduct. "The Township Board recognizes that to carry out its mission of service to the community, the Township Board, officials, employees, and volunteers must earn the full confidence of the township community. The residents and taxpayers expect and are entitled to a local government that conducts its affairs in a fair, ethical, transparent, and accountable manner. To accomplish these ends, the Township Board expects compliance with the following Code of Ethic Conduct. In conducting their official duties, township officials and employees shall observe both the spirit and intent of all applicable laws, township ordinances, and township policies and procedures. Township officials shall act in a fair, impartial manner. Actions of officials and employees shall be consistent with the township's best interests, rather than for personal gain. The township shall practice transparency in its affairs unless there is a legal necessity for confidentiality. Civility and respect will be demonstrated in all governance processes and in the delivering of township programs and services. And at 3.41, interactions with others, interactions with others shall demonstrate fairness, respect, impartiality, and equitable treatment." We all remember the heartfelt words our clerk spoke after finding the nasty letter under her office door in February. Who conducted this investigation and by whose authority? If I recall correctly, it took a board vote to approve an investigation and to email Gate back in November 2023 that we are still paying for. Clerk Flintoff, when you spoke of the nasty letter in February's board meeting, you indicated an investigation was already underway. Where in the board minutes was the authority granted for this investigation? Through various sources, none of whom are currently in Township Hall as I speak, said investigation has been completed and the culprit decided on. Recently, I interviewed, I interviewed that person who's been labeled as the writer of the nasty letter. What in holy hell are you doing to this, this township, Clerk Flintoff? Your Keystone Cops type of internal investigation is a farce, a sham, a way to attack an innocent person. Where is the concrete evidence? Where are the witnesses? You couldn't possibly have real evidence, or you would have made a public statement, but instead, you let it be known internally, damaging the person you named. So let's see, you don't want to give up power to the supervisor, so you discredit the supervisor with rumors. You put a name of ownership to the letter, not in a million years would that person ever have done that sort of thing. This pattern of spreading rumors, attacking people that you don't like with unfounded allegations, is creating a house of cards. Who are you going to go after next? What person has pissed you off this week? You and your board of cronies are creating a hostile work environment and an atmosphere of distrust. You and some on this board are creating a house of cards. If you don't like somebody, or you feel threatened by them, you cut them down, demote them, slander them, shame them in some shape or fashion. How dare you pin that nasty letter on who you did? And should, you should be ashamed, and who is on this investigation team? What a joke. You're now Clerk Flintoff's Keystone Cops.
Thank you, Lynn.
Hello, new board. I'm Phil, I'm in 55 Woodgrove. I'll be brief, I promise not to pound the table, and this is about Aubrey's Grove, and I sent you an email today, and I just want to make a brief and say I appreciated your support in the fall, as I appreciate it now. And it's a complex situation, and it has evolved since September. They bought the property, and I read the briefs, I'm no lawyer, I'm a doctor, but thanks for interesting reading nevertheless. And as Alan pointed out, in terms of our own board, our own group, we never took a vote, and even though we urged such an event to occur, it never happened. So I don't know the specifics of where this is all going, but suffice it to say, I appreciate all of your, this is a long haul, it's a very long haul, this whole process, and I guess it ain't over until it's over. They say possession is not intensive law, they bought the property, but I guess what, you're the other 10%. And I feel like we're in an era now of intimidation, you know, that's kind of intimidation to do normal. I don't, I don't know the specifics of the interactions that are occurring here, but I do appreciate your continued engagement, involvement, and awareness of where we are all coming from on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Helene New, I'm also at Parkwood condos.
Helene?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's H-E-L-E-N-E, last name N-E-U. I also want to thank you all for your support at the end of what we thought, we were hoping, was the end of a, what, two-and-a-half-year battle. I'm not sure, and then you all are dealt, dealing with more continuation of this, and then the property, after you denied the Innovance Developments what they wanted to do, they went and bought the land at super cheap price. I guess it was around $232,000, wouldn't it? That would, that would have been nice for them, $232,000, which really is nothing for that four-and-a-half acres, whatever it is. Clearly, they still intend to develop there. This is not a case of NIMBY, although, you know, I sure would like to have those woods in front of me still, but it's going to, it's probably something's going to happen. I'm hoping that it will be much, much, much lower density, with lots of green space, there are all those trees that are giving us protection from zebroed, the noise. They've already, some of them have already been cut down by the person who bought the house that was there. It's also good for the environment, we're concerned about the water issues, that still has to be dealt with, that they want to come across our land to dispose of their water, and we do still, I mean, it's wetlands. But if they're going to build, I would say, please push for the lowest we can get, with lots of green space, with the water issues taken care of. And I would say, because I live right across the street, that they, instead of putting a big building way up and putting a big wall, that they keep a border, a thick border of trees between their property and ours, so that we get some, both visual protection and also auditory protection as much as possible. It's too bad that, I don't know whether you all had your closed session and whether this was talked about, it's unfortunate that this is the last issue on your agenda, and that, that only then can we have discussion with you all about it, but hopefully, there'll be another meeting where, I suspect there are going to be plenty more meetings about this, unfortunately for you and for us. But again, thank you for your support so far, I hope it continues.
Thank you.
Thanks, Helene.
It's discussion. Anyone else present would like to speak during public comments? No? Anyone online?
Yes, first to speak will be Rob Pattinson, followed by Paula Bluberson. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township resident. Just a point of clarification for Helene. The meeting about Aubrey's Grove at the end of the meeting is closed session, so there's no guarantee that they will come back with any information to make public. In fact, I highly doubt that there will be any information made public after that meeting, just so you know. Perhaps the board can comment on that at the end of public comments, so that the Aubrey's Grove people know whether they need to sit through the whole meeting or not. I've got a question for Mariah. In the agenda packet, it says on the spreadsheet about the legal fees for the state of Michigan versus Jillian Carey, on the four, on the April 25 entry, that's the new one, it says in the comments section, includes cost of forensic expert, which should be approved. Now, at the last meeting, the board went through quite a bit of discussion about the, if, the issue of a single attorney, and basically, it boiled down to Jillian can hire anyone she wants, and it boils down to a single invoice rather than a single attorney. So could you please explain the comment in that spreadsheet?
Not until response.
Rob, we'll wait till there's board, board member response, and we'll, we'll allow Mariah to speak during their time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I would appreciate a response, and then also to anyone on the board, could you inform us as to why on page five of the minutes Kathleen Brant is quoted, transcribed, word for word, and the other moments of the meeting are transcribed in summary? And so please explain why Kathleen is transcribed word for word? And then for Aubrey's Grove, I'd like to thank Alan Burbano and the Parkwood neighborhood for setting such an excellent standard for how a neighborhood can oppose a hostile developer. And I will remind this board that the developer said at a meeting several months ago, "Well, you never should have built in a, in a floodplain," was their response to the water issues that the Parkwood neighborhood is having. And that kind of dismissive attitude towards the, the people that they're going to be building next to, I think, defines the Aubrey's Grove project. Remember that they also proposed adding 7.3 feet to the Aubrey's Grove property to make sure that the water that is in that wetlands area flows even more onto their, onto their neighbors. The Aubrey's Grove design as it is now is a terrible design. It is a shoehorn project, putting, what was it, 30, 27 or 37 units onto 3.89 buildable acres is just ridiculous, and the flooding that that's going to cause is extremely unfair to the people who live there. And then, could you please put public comment at the end of the meeting before your closed session? I imagine that there won't be any information after the closed sessions that will be shared with the public, so it seems unreasonable to make the public sit through an empty meeting while you go into closed session. Please put public comment at the end before you go into closed session, and I will remind you once again, please put your mics on and leave them on, you often forget to turn them on during the meeting, which is understandable, and please remember to speak six to 10 inches away from the microphone. Jessica, when you speak, and you speak right into the microphone, it overwhelms the AV system, and it comes, comes through booming, so two or three inches is much too close. Keep it six to 10 inches away from the, the microphone, and you'll be fine, and please leave them on, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Paula Bluberson, followed by Sharon McGuire. Go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, good evening. I, I just have always been in support of the Aubrey Grove against building in that wetland over there, and there was even an Eagle meeting, but it was a little bit less than what the state required, but I, I really hope we can look at those plans, I, I still don't understand how their HOA can only meet with the township and all the other people involved, but I, I just wanted to say that I, I've lived in this area for a long time, that, that floods over Zeb Road a lot of times, and if you go by there now, it's extremely wet, I know they say they've got something approved by the drain commissioner, a current one that, she didn't even know that Gelman wasn't a superfund, so I, I don't know what that means with drain commissioners, I just remember Janice Bobber, and thank you so much, and that's all I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Paula. Next up is Sharon McGuire, followed by Bill Doty. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Hi, I'm Cheryl McGuire, your recording secretary, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for renewing my contract this year. Hi, I'm Cheryl McGuire, your recording secretary. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for renewing my contract this year. I truly appreciate your continued trust in me to document the record accurately. While the nature of this work means occasional typos or corrections are inevitable, I remain committed to getting it right. So it's an honor to serve the township in this way. And since I'm here, I would respond briefly to Rob Pattinson's comments, which when a Board of Trustee member requests that something be read into the minutes, it is usually put in like that. It's not the first time that's happened in my work here for the township. I did it for Will Hathaway and have done it occasionally for others. And it's a policy decision. If the board doesn't want that to continue, that would be the board's choice, because these are the board's minutes. And so hopefully, that answers that question.
Yeah, thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks for all your work, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Bill Doty. Go ahead, Bill.
Hello, my name is Bill Doty from 465 Wood Grove Drive, part of the Parkwood condos. I too want to thank you for the work you did in the resolution last fall to deny the Abra Grove development. And the work that was done by the attorney, Mariah Fink, in regards to her excellent brief to Washtenaw County 22nd Circuit Court. For consideration, I sent a note to you earlier today where I'm basically requesting that you stand by the logic that you used in that resolution to deny in negotiating a new site plan with Innovant. You still want, you still want to have them satisfy the master plan elements that were specified in that resolution to deny. The units, if they are lower density, can be terraced without backfilling the property to leave, to follow the contour of the land. And of course, it'd be fewer units than are originally planned. Those 35 units are just crammed into that current site plan. Shoehorned, as I think Pattinson said. Anyway, those are my thoughts. I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else that would like to speak a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. There are no hand-throughs.
Okay. Let's, so now it's time for a board member response. And I believe there was Rob Pattinson had a question.
Well, yeah.
Oh, so Cheryl, thank you for answering Rob's question about the
Yeah.
the minutes. And then what was the other one? I wrote it down. I can't see this. Oh, sure. No, I thought there was another question for Mariah, but I oh, do you want to go Mariah first or?
I would be happy to have the clerk respond to that.
Oh, sure.
About that.
Yeah, sure. I think, sure, there was. Rob had a question about agenda item 06, approval of the claim for payment for attorney fees. This is the updated statement, which the board has looked at now, I think at the last meeting as well, prepared by Rebecca Maudie. There was a question about the column of comments. Those are the same as they were before, as discussed. They're produced by Mariah. And she included one line that said, you know, noting that it includes the cost of forensic expert, which should be approved. As you remember, in our last resolution, we have Mariah going through in giving her review of the costs related to criminal defense. I would assume she's flagging that for us about why that, you know, is a higher bill. It includes that expert and is related to criminal defense.
Yeah, it was just intended to clarify because the invoice itself had two parts.
Yeah.
Just intended to clarify.
Yeah. And again, as we're not seeing the original invoices anymore, we have to rely on our wonderful township attorney to give her due diligence because she is the one holding those original invoices.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Reed, did you have?
No.
Oh, I thought.
You took care of it.
No. Oh, okay.
Just briefly on the, to Helene News' comment, we haven't had any conversation. We're going to have that conversation tonight. I do anticipate we'll go into closed session with our attorney because it's the subject of litigation, where an open conversation might harm the township's position. So we'll go into closed session. I anticipate we'll just be having it slated for discussion only. And so we won't be reporting anything after that. So sometimes we put closed item, agenda items at the end of the meeting out of respect for the public because we know it'll be late and we won't be saying anything.
Let's see, riser, he said, no?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I had one other comment.
Sure. Oh, I just wanted to say, Mary Beth, your item is under consent agenda. So when we approve that, well, it's a sweeping vote for the consent and you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting unless you want to. Thank you.
I just wanted to address one comment from Pam Boyd related to the various authorities, the various trustees who draft items, discuss items, be concerned about invoices. Every board member is an equal policy member. We draft things all the time and sit down with each other. The draft MOU was clearly drafted by a couple of members and our attorney. That's been hashed out. In terms of the authority for review of invoices, as you know, I bring the payment of the bills under MCL 41.75. The board must approve it. It's the board's responsibility to make sure all invoices are queued up. We've worked very hard internally with our finance manager through our processes to make sure every invoice adds up, makes sense, is clearly noted. That's what the public expects of us. The invoices did not meet those criteria. They did not add up the hourly rates. There were some just mistakes. Things were not clearly marked what they were for. The regarding name did not state clearly that it was in fact for criminal defense costs of state v. carry. We worked through that process for a couple of months, hammered that out at the last meeting. And I would say in terms of any expert review, the treasurer and I did in fact sit down with a forensic auditor at Raymond, who's one of our, Raymond does our audit. We were talking to them about scoping out kind of what level of administrative review we wanted to do for some of the past problems of the past administration. And in the course of that, we did have a chance to kind of have them look at a couple of the original audit invoices. And they said, yes, we understand the problems here. Ryan and I didn't think it would be a good use of township funds to actually have them, you know, pay them for a work product to say what they told us for free on teams and what was evident to anybody who looked at those invoices. So again, I want to thank the board for working through that process so that we have our attorney reviewing them and making sure everybody's comfortable with what's being paid. Thank you.
Yes, and I just want to say that from the beginning, I was instructed to provide combined invoices. So I did follow instructions. My attorneys are from very high-powered, well, one has his own firm now, and the other one works for a firm. So all the invoices that did come to me were what? Because I was the one paying for the bills until Clerk Flintoff found the ordinance. So everything was fine. And it was just a hard process to get to middle ground. And when I suggested my attorney speak to the township attorneys is when things started going smoothly. So my attorneys have done nothing wrong, and I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. And it's just been a really hard process here. Okay. So could we please move on? To Jay, approval of the minutes for May 13th regular meeting? Are there any changes?
I have none. I have none.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
I move we adopt the minutes as presented for our May 13th, 2025 regular meeting.
Is there support?
We agreed.
Sure, please.
Motion by riser, support by Reed to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, on to consent.
Can I ask for a voice hold on that one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's out of courtesy.
I don't want to be, I'm rushing through so we can get out by nine. I'm kidding. Yeah. Is there any, anything on here that has to do with?
I think.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Thank you.
No nays. Okay, on to consent agenda. Let's see. Is there?
I'll move you to consent agenda.
I move, I support the movement of the consent agenda as we modified it earlier.
There's payment to Kennedy, so we have to call.
There's, per our rules of order, we don't have to call the rolls on payments.
Wow, yeah, we don't, but it's, it's.
But any member may request a roll call vote if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay, well, I guess all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None?
And can I just clarify, it was a motion by riser who supported?
Oh, wasn't it people?
I moved it, John. I think David moved it, riser support. And I want to congratulate Mary Beth Lynch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's just got approved, man. Welcome.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Okay, regular reports and special, excuse me, special reports. There is an LPC annual report with a presentation by Barry Lonik. Is he online?
Barry, if you're online, raise your hand. I don't see your name.
He was?
Yeah.
Well.
He's not out there.
Yes. Did David, you want, want to deliver the Barry's report?
Pass a minute, no pressure.
Well.
Did everybody read it?
I did, yes.
It's from the co-chairs, I think David could handle it.
Or maybe we could all handle it. We've all read it.
This is the, well, there's a lot of information here, and I don't feel myself qualified to talk about it all. But suffice to say, we spent a lot of money and we have a lot of land. I can't remember how many. I think we have six preserves and I think 13 or 14 conservation easements. And we are looking at a couple more this year. So last year, I think it was lean year. This year, I think we're going to have quite a few. It was not quite a few, maybe two or three.
Should we ask Barry to attend the next meeting?
Yep, we can certainly send a note because he can obviously do much more just than you can.
Okay, let's do that. Well, thank you for the best version.
Not even.
Sure.
I did want to say, you know, I would like to, at some point, it doesn't have to be tonight, but have a joint meeting of the board and the LPC, David, I know we've talked about this. But we, I'd really like the board to engage in a conversation of what our priorities are. And as needed, go into closed session to consider all applications we've received to date.
That be a joint closed session?
Aye.
I would imagine so.
Okay.
I would imagine we'd invite the LPCN.
Just kind of ask, do you mean received to date that are open and pending or that we've branched it like in years past?
I would, so, so there's a couple of things. One, one to set the priorities generally, you know, are we trying to save trees? Are we trying to save biodiversity? Are we, I don't know, the right technical language. But then more specifically, I would imagine, I don't know, I mean, we could confirm with our township attorney before this that we would have authority to go into closed session if we are considering any applications that we've received. And I don't mean closed ones. I mean any we've received but not yet acted on.
You mean like open ones? And I think we would be able to, because as far as the purchase of land or conservation easements on land, that it'd be good to have a conversation, like, are we just trying to get conservation easements? Is that our focus? Or is our focus on getting land that we can get residents on and use and walk and that kind of? I appreciate the sentiment. I would support that as well.
Could we, could we schedule that for June 10th or June 24th, June 24th? We only have two items so far.
I think we need to involve the OPC on their availability because we have some folks who work.
No, but we could, we can invite like Barry and maybe the chairs. I mean, what, I'll leave it.
So not, so you're not thinking of one or two of the ready?
I would prefer that it be both full groups, and I know that might take time to schedule.
Okay, like, like an hour early, hour earlier? Could be.
I would suggest a special meeting at some point, but I'll defer to David on the details. If you want to talk to the LPC and bring back a proposal.
I will, and I think there's enough to warrant a special one, one agenda meeting or one item meeting because there's a lot of stuff to talk about.
Would we doing it like on the 24th at six o'clock before our 7:05 meeting?
Can you give us a little time?
July 24th?
No, I don't.
June 4th?
24.
Oh, no.
We're kind of perusing the master calendar, whether or not we have space.
I would imagine this might be a two or three hour conversation. So I would just ask David to maybe talk to the LPC and come back with a recommendation.
And just so I'm clear, this is separate from having him very on the tent.
Or on the, yeah, okay, thanks.
Priority setting for the acquisition of land and or easements. I don't know, two or three hours, but you have the others.
I think what Jessica or Clerk Flintoff said, not only that talk about the priorities, but also what is it we're trying as a township, what is it we're trying to do when we buy land?
Okay. Well, I guess let's we'll wait in anticipation for Barry's report at the next meeting. The next one would be report from the fire chief. He's here.
Chief.
How was everybody at CD?
Good, chief.
Since I've got my report in your packet, and I assume everybody's read it.
Yep.
Just want to touch on a few highlights and things that stand out to me. And I'll take any questions the board might have. Initially, well, first of all, since I haven't been in front of you for a report since the end of the year, we'll talk about last year first. 6.5% up calls over 2023. Statistically, we typically rise every year, COVID being the exception. That's pretty consistent throughout the fire service. We are continuing to get busier. Total fire loss in the community, just shy of $3 million. That doesn't, if we were to compare that to the amount of property we saved, I think the numbers would look a lot better. We did save a significant property, even though we did have a significant loss. 45% of our calls were for EMS. That makes rescue, fires, good intensive weather, all those other call types, the majority of our calls. But 45% is for EMS calls. That is not typical in the fire service. Traditionally, you'd see 70 to 75% for EMS calls. Part of that is because we don't respond to every EMS call in Scioto Township here on Valley. We'll handle some of them on their own. And I estimate, and I don't have a good basis to give you this number, but I would estimate HVA does about 500 calls in the community that we don't respond to. And that's basically because the acuity of the call is such that it doesn't require our response. Mutual aid, last year, if we look at the numbers just by themselves, doesn't tell the whole story. But we requested mutual aid 73 times, yet we responded to mutual aid 71 times. While the numbers look even, each mutual aid request isn't equal. For example, all of, virtually all of our mutual aid requests that we provided to another community was one engine or one tanker. And very often, our mutual aid requests are involved multiple companies. So on a structure fire, we'd have three or four mutual aid companies come in. Our software isn't sophisticated enough to tell me exactly call for call, you know, how many engines or anchors or something else came into Scioto versus one out. But I just understand, while that looks like it's a fair number, we're still relying on our neighbors for more help that we're giving them. Heat map from our new software. Remember, last year, we upgraded our software to a new system. It's our first full year on it, and it does provide a heat map, although not with the detail of our previous program. But it does show areas where it's busier. Jump in a significant incidents. January 3rd, we had a structure fire on Prospect. Uh, jump in a significant incidents, um, January third, uh, we had a structure fire on Prospect Port, uh, that's up in, um, Black Altby neighborhood, uh, that fire was unique because it involved, uh, a, a Tesla um, electric vehicle, uh, the Tesla was not the source of the fire, however, it did complicate the fire itself. We had that inside the garage, uh, when the fire started in the garage, um, it was an electrical fire, uh, remote from the Tesla. Uh, but that did complicate it because we did have that vehicle burn up with its battery capacity. You may remember April ninth, there was a, uh, structure fire on Stowe Street in SiO Township, uh, this one's, uh, noteworthy. This was a recalled, um, dehumidifier in a basement, very, very little fire damage. However, uh, when the unit melted down, it produced so much smoke, uh, that they'd essentially had to gut the entire home. So even a very small fire like that has displaced a resident for nine to twelve months, uh, and essentially down to drywall for the majority of them, or down to studs. Uh, Gray Fox Court in SiO Township, um, neighborhood's escaping me, um.
May twenty-fifth, you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, uh, Maple Miller area there, um, uh, neighborhood over there, um, we were on, uh, two call, or we're on one call, so we only had two people in the station at the time, uh, the other vehicle responded immediately. Uh, we arrived, this started as a deck fire, uh, but due to the long response time to that area, that fire extended into the home and into the attic. Uh, significant damage to that home, although we're able to extinguish it and save a lot of the homeowner's, uh, contents of property. Uh, this is kind of interesting, uh, mutually response, September fourth, uh, Frains Lake Road in Superior Township. Uh, we sent our tanker with all our on-duty personnel out, that's just the other side of Ann Arbor. Uh, significant home loss there, uh, but of note, um, right after the crews responded to this incident, we had a fire in SiO Township. Fortunately, both the assistant chief and I were, uh, in the building within a couple minutes, and he and I, uh, were able to handle that, uh, fire. Uh, my first time actually putting on an air pack and fighting a fire here in SiO, so it was interesting. Uh, but, you know, when called into service, having the administrative staff, uh, in, in the building and in the township has paid off.
Did Terry go too?
Well, she did not. Uh, December first, commercial vehicle fire on Baker Road, we had a gentleman who was, uh, temporarily, uh, live, living in a semi truck on a fire, in a truck, uh, he did receive, uh, serious burns in the fire. Um, that was our only major fire injury to a person, uh, the shirt. Uh, he has, from my understanding, has recovered, um, obviously, he's not living in the truck, uh, I don't know where he's at now, but I believe he's still in the township. Uh, just interesting data I was able to pull from our, uh, reporting software. Um, incidents by date and hour, uh, between five and six AM is our slowest hour of the day. So if you start at midnight and go all the way to eleven fifty-nine the next, uh, that day, I call that one day. Uh, between five and six AMs are slowest hour of the day, only thirty-one incidents throughout the year. Uh, between two and three PM is our busiest hour, uh, a hundred and one incidents, so basically between two and three, every third day, we have at least one call during that time period. Uh, Sunday is our slowest day of the week and Fridays are busiest. Uh, responses by vehicle, now mind you, uh, it was two-thirds of the way through last year that we put our rescue in service. Uh, to respond primarily to medical calls, but engine one took a thousand forty calls, rescue one seven fifty-nine. Engine two, which primarily serves as backup, a hundred and thirty, our tanker, forty-seven, that really only responds on fires. Uh, the brush truck, five, um, myself, uh, thirty-three calls and the assistant chief, thirty-six.
Thank you.
Um, touching, I'm gonna jump into this year real quick, uh, through May fifteenth, when I put this report together, we're up four percent calls year over year, um, couple significant, significant incidents this year. Uh, April twenty-second, alternatively fueled commercial vehicle fire on a parking lot in Jackson. Uh, this was a delivery truck that's powered by propane, uh, that vehicle had a fire coasted to a stop in the CBS parking lot. Um, that presents a very unique hazard as that propane tank was impinged on and involved in the fire and began venting right as our engine showed up uh, to put water on it, um. Interesting incident, we don't get those very often, uh, but fortunately, our engine was close and they were put fire on that and stopped the propane from venting from the tank, put the fire out and didn't have a failure of the tank.
Is that a vehicle that was powered by propane or hauling propane?
Powered by.
Okay. Yeah, we see.
Yep, had a propane cylinder underneath the driver's seat, it was a conversion. Uh, actually delivered water, uh, here. Uh, and yeah, you know, if that fire had extended a little bit further, we'd have been okay, all those water. Uh, April twenty-third, um, and I only mentioned this one because I had several residents reach out to me, uh, this evening. They heard a loud explosion, uh, actually right down the street here. Uh, so what had actually happened was a, uh, tow truck had a problem with their brakes or something. Caused the brakes to catch on fire and the residents heard a tire exploding. Uh, if you've never heard that, and in the fire service on vehicle fires, they happen routinely, they're extremely loud. Uh, and very startling to residents, but as it turned out, our guys got there and put that out very quickly and it was just the tire burning. Uh, touch on a couple of projects and I'll, I'll leave you for the next item we have to talk about. Um, our ATV purchase, uh, the board last year budgeted sixty thousand dollars towards an ATV for firefighting rescue purposes. Uh, we brought that project to the board, um, cost of, we estimated it forty-seven, forty-five, seven sixty-four, uh, that's what the board had authorized for the project. Uh, we're, we're finishing it up, the last piece is, uh, being prepared to be delivered, and we're gonna come in at about forty-four thousand, so a couple thousand under on that project. Uh, that vehicle, since we put it in service, we have not used on a fire yet, but have used on several rescue calls. Uh, one more notably, uh, in, in the Uplands area of the township, uh, there's a travel path, uh, that, that goes through a bunch of neighborhoods. We had a gentleman, uh, who has mobility impaired, using a scooter to appreciate the outdoors, uh, became stuck and fell off his, uh, off the vehicle. Uh, we were able to locate him, brought that vehicle out there, put him in there, placed his mobility scooter in it and drove a mile back to his home. Station two update. Uh, we're pretty much locked in on a floor plan, we've been meeting with the architects regularly. Uh, we initially shrank the building up by about two thousand square feet, um, but working with the mechanical engineer, uh, they wanna put a a small loft in or a small mezzanine in to hold all the equipment for geothermal to power the building, uh, heating and cooling system. And that's gonna add a little bit of space back into it, uh, although it's gonna be cheap space, it's just block walls and some lights in there, so not real finished space. But so far, we're looking at a very sustainable building, um, geothermal, uh, with very limited natural gas in the building for anything. Uh, we're using, we're looking to local sources for many of the materials, um, uh, concrete and asphalt, uh, both right across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, right down the street, we have, uh, and it's actually in Lowdy Township, but, uh, about a mile down the street, we've got all the sand and gravel we need. If we need to bring any on site, um, because our contractor's optimistic that we can, uh, when digging out for our, uh, detention area, use the majority of that and whatever, uh, remaining dirt on the site to, to build that up, so we're hoping for a little rod in. Uh, Fenn Block is right on the corner, uh, so we're optimistic, they're, they're out there meeting with them this week, uh, to look at, uh, product samples, uh, so that, uh, we can reduce trucking costs for that. Um, and also the building is being prepared and as is the site and the site plan for, uh, solar, both rooftop and a solar array to help offset. Uh, we're about ninety percent on the site plan, we intend to submit to the planning commission, uh, next week. Uh, so we're anticipating a, we hope for a July PC meeting, at which point, uh, the board should see it soon after, uh, for approval. Uh, as soon as I have more, um, data for you, uh, when we have the finalized site plan in four, then I'll get it out to the board personally. Uh, last but not least, uh, negotiation with the firefighters union, uh, we have two dates scheduled this week, tomorrow and Thursday. Uh, we've settled a lot of the non-economic issues, uh, so I anticipate, uh, one or two hangups, um, but we should, we should make some good progress this weekend, uh, should get you something by the end of the week as to where with that. That said, uh, any other questions I can answer for the board?
Did you buy your twenty thousand dollar thing?
None. You. I don't think you're talking, well, anyway, chief, um, with the, the second station, most, it's, you said, um, there's very little natural gas. Lithia, mo, um, you know, suburban Lithia, whatever, they said that their, their bay doors, that they had to have a backup with natural gas because of code. Is that the same with this station?
So we're, we just met with our mechanical, mechanical contractor to start that discussion last week. And he did indicate that, and, and I don't know if it was code or if it's his experience, but he said, we might need to put in one emergency, uh, like radiant two heater, uh, either for those days that it gets really cold or in, in the geothermal can't keep up, uh, but we haven't, we're not into it that far, we're just.
Oh, okay, I just remembered that conversation from Lithia and the materials, you said that, um, like Fent and whatever, are, is, do materials go out for bid?
Yeah, they will.
They do, okay, um, cause you mentioned some specific names, so I wasn't sure if that was.
I just meant, yeah, of those three I mentioned specifically were materials providers that are SiO, uh, businesses. Um, and they're literally, uh, with, within spitting distance of the station. So a lot of, a lot of times when you see a project like this, so if we were, Fent was taking a block out to say, uh, Chelsea, right? There's gonna be a pretty significant delivery charge, uh, because we're loading them up and driving them, you know, twenty miles, so it might be a couple hours in the truck. Um, whereas this, uh, is gonna be a lot quicker, um, you know, and, uh, getting a little free from, uh, that, that site, Chelsea's more expensive than getting it across the street too, so. We have some advantages logistically, uh, with trucking.
Okay.
Which, which could potentially save us money.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Chief, on the Lithia PUD, on the list, I mean, I would ask him to look at the PUD agreement, cause it might address what they can or can't do by way of non, non, uh, so, you, you know, what's the word I'm looking for, non fossil fuel heating.
Non what?
Fossil fuel. Non fossil fuel, I mean, it's supposed to be an all-electric building. And, and, and that might be in the PUD agreement, might be the development agreement. So just cause the, the heating contractor wants to put gas in here as a backup, it might violate, I'm not saying it does, but that was the, that was the big deal, the big splash, the big push. And, uh, that might be changing.
Gotcha.
Changing the game midstream, so I, I'm not, just, I don't know if you check with Laura or if you check with Mariah on that. And I'm not, I'm not saying it's your job to monitor our development or PUD agreements, but they should be aware. Yeah.
Yeah, but the only thing I, reason why I brought up Lithia is I used to remember about the big doors that they, because if there's a power outage, then those doors can. If it's all electric and they had to have some type of backup, but I mean, I could, it's been a while, you know, since.
Yeah, they're, they're actually looking at several strategies, right? Because, you, you know, our guys go out, you open up a fourteen-foot door, it's a huge heat center, so they're, they're talking about, uh, they've done some buildings with air curtains, which will help keep the majority of the heat in as the vehicles pull out. Couple that with geothermal and we might, you know, have ninety-nine percent of our heat covered right there, so, but, but we're still in development, so.
You're gonna heat the floor?
That's our preliminary talk, uh, radiant in the floor, yes.
Yeah.
Yep, that, we, we had a lot of really good conversations during interviews with different construction managers about different strategies, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, dude.
Once you get that concrete warm, yeah, rewarm's room real quick.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've got some logistical challenges, right? You don't forget, we're pulling a, you know, fifty thousand pounds of vehicle out, uh, when it's twelve below zero, sitting it outside for forty-five minutes and then bringing this big ice cube back in, so it's a little different challenge. But, but they're, they're, they're up to it, they really wanna look at this problem and solve it, uh, in a sustainable way, uh, like for, for the boards, uh, directly.
Mm-hmm. Something.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to note that, um, the rescue is the second most frequently used vehicle, we used ARPA money for that, so good job, board. Um, I wanna thank you for your awesome work and tell you how grateful I am that we have a wonderful fire chief in so many ways, including that you're able to manage this very complex project while being the fire chief. So I wanna just, you know, say thank you and how, how lucky we are that you have those skills. Um, for the board, I wanna make sure, because we have such a competent fire chief project manager, um, just wanna, um, keep, keep an eye on the pieces that we need to do to support this fire station, so.
Yep.
A couple of the things, and I know they're on the upcoming proposed agenda items list, but, um, I'm hoping that, you know, I know Mariah and, um, Ryan and I have talked about a discussion of a DDA township agreement regarding special millages. I'm hoping we can have that discussion on June twenty-fourth. Christie, I know, is working with the chief on a lease revision for Vestergard, I hope we could have that July twenty-second to keep us on track for August twenty-sixth. August twenty-sixth is our target for approval of the bonding of the construction of the fire station. So those are kind of things that appear that kind of help keep the project, uh, moving forward. So, thank you, chief.
You're welcome, and just, just one final comment, I think this probable project will give me a few more gray hairs, unfortunately, don't know notice.
Thank you, chief.
I know, thank you.
Thanks. Oh, okay, we're on to regular reports from supervisor, treasurer, clerk, office coordinator, departments and committees. Um, well, since the supervisor was listed first, I attended on May twenty-second the Washtenaw County Sheriff, um, office, they have quarterly meetings with the supervisors or the heads of the townships. And, um, this is our second one and it seems to go, be going pretty well. So there's some updates that I need to share, um, they are phasing out the banked hours, they will no longer be doing that. They are moving to, so if we have banked hours, we will be using them up, um, we're not losing them. I did not ask company banked hours and I, we, actually it would be in the report. So, um, they will be going to, if we have in our contract eight deputies, we're only using seven, then we are only paying for seven. So then that brought up a huge discussion about overtime. And Brenda Stumbo, she's the Ypsilanti, um, supervisor, and she had a ton of questions and it, it just different scenarios and whatnot, and we were all confused, so, um, we, we requested a special meeting just to go over overtime and that's in the works of being, um, scheduled. Uh, let's see, um, they, you know, chief or sheriff, um, Alicia Dyer is doing a really good job of revamping and going through budgets, every department. From what I understand, it's the county commissioners that set the budget for the sheriff department and they did cut some things. Um, was it last year? So then this year, um, the department is looking at different ways of, you know, cutting costs, but also, um, making sure that everything is running smoothly. So a big cost is for the jail system and we have to provide food and medical by law. So looking at that, there's al, also the tethering program, which does cost a lot of money, but you know, it's either they're in jail and costs a lot of money or they're tethered and so they, they're doing a good job of going through everything, um, and there's more to come. So, let's see, yeah, so the county commissioners cut two point six million out of the budget because of the vacancies, which brings us to, there are twenty-five bank vacancies, uh, countywide regarding the sheriff department. There's, um, seven, that's with the deputies, I mean, there's seventy-seven vacancies, um, corrections and, uh, dispatch and road patrol, so they are in the hiring process. And whenever they get, let's say, ten applicants, five or six of them don't work out, so they are hiring, it's just slow because of the process. They are budgeted for three hundred and fifty-nine, um, employees total. Oh, here's another one, they're labor, the union contract expires in December twenty twenty-five, so they're kind of going through the same thing that we're going through. So there's some things that are up in the air. And I think that's about it for now, we will be meeting again pretty, pretty soon, uh, before our next quarterly.
Sure.
Um, thank you for the update, I'm, I'm really excited about what the sheriff's doing. Um, I, I do have some questions about our, our contract, as we may remember, you know, our last contract, I think it was a worse contract than we'd had before with the sheriff. And, and some of these terms, I haven't looked at our contract recently, but I'd like to kind of look at these proposed terms against our contract, cause I'm concerned, it sounds on the face of it, and just from what Rebecca and I kind of look at each month, you know, if we're getting rid of banked hours and they're saying we're not having eight PSUs, but seven PSUs, then it would go to. then it would go to Brenda Stumbo's point that we would be having to pay one point five instead of one. Um, so one point five overtime instead of the one for one banked hours, but I guess I'm just wondering, all of these proposed changes, have we even looked at if that's in violation of our current contract? They, they seem like they would have to be written.
Yeah, they haven't, so there, there's still a lot of banked hours, so they're working through that, from what I understood, and yeah, Brenda was bringing up those points, but then they also talked about, there was different scenarios, like, well, if, if, if you have this, then you won't have overtime, but if you have this, you will, and we were like, what, you know, cause it's, so we want it all written out for us, and that's what that next meeting would be.
And that would be a proposed contract amendment they'd be providing to us?
Our, no, they're still fulfilling the contracts, except for the banked hours, but, um.
And the eight PSUs. We, we do contract very, I just have to look at it kind of alongside the contract, because it's just raising a lot of questions.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, I started reading through the contract, but it's kind of piecemeal, because there was an original contract and they kept making amendments, and then, um, because I brought up at the meeting, well, our contract's, you know, three years, and they look at me like my head was, you know, it is, and when I pulled it, it said twenty twenty, um, to twenty-six, so it was twenty twenty-three.
That's correct.
But that was an amendment, it wasn't, it, it's really bizarre, so I pulled the, we'll just have to read through it again, but, and I, and it's not just us that we're confused, it's the other townships and, um, well, like Manchester City, city of Manchester, she, um, Pat Bellincor, Bellin, sorry, Pat, if you're listening, but she had a lot of questions as well, because they're paying for their contract, but then the townships around them don't have a contract, but they're paying for all those townships and, yeah, um.
Question about that, have you had Mariah review the contract with you?
Not yet. No, because we are waiting, I was, because our first meeting with the sheriff, um, it was just talk about some new things, and then they brought up, they did mention something about banked hours, but they didn't really, they said, well, we're thinking about, um, phasing them out, but then this one, they said, no, we're phasing them out, but you're gonna, whatever banked hours you have, we're gonna use those.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that's not in violation of our current contract.
Agreed, and I, I would say the other thing, the, the reports attached tonight, we accumulated three hundred and forty-four banked hours during the month of April. We only have a bank balance of five point six. So, we definitely accumulate some, but we definitely also use them up, so we have to look at the fiscal impact of this severely, because there's a lot of in and out.
Biggest general fund expense. Yeah, we just, um, received a overtime bill as well, or a statement.
We, yeah, we budget for about fifty thousand of overtime a year in addition.
Anyway. Could we add that to your list? Okay, thank you. Okay, that was the, well, and also, LASSA, um, Lockalpine Sanit- Sanitation Authority, we had a sewer backup a couple of, um, May sixth or seventh, so we have been dealing with that, and that's been taking up a lot of my time. Yes, and there's, um, when is that scheduled? Thursday, Thursday at three.
Yeah, special meeting is here of the LASSA board at three P M. for the purpose of discussing, uh, the recent incident.
Pardon my ignorance, but why is it taking up your time, Julian?
Because I'm the chair of LASSA.
Oh, okay.
When there's a sewer, potential sewer leak, I assume the insurance carrier would, would have been notified by Mariah, I mean, you would.
No, not Mariah, Mariah's not the, the attorney for LASSA, Matt James. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
But that will take any work that you might be doing away from you, cause you won't be involved. It'll, the insurance company would be involved in doing any investigation.
Well, there's a lot of things, because it's still taking up a lot of my time, because to find out, I mean, the, the previous board didn't pass along, here's a policy of when this happens. So, we don't have any of that, I'm, I'm scrambling and researching to find those things and put it together. It's a lot of work.
You could have asked David or me.
You're not on the LASSA board.
I know, but I have a lot of knowledge about general ways things have been done over the years on the Silo Board, and I have a lot of knowledge about insurance defense laws, that's correct.
Well, yes, and we have, we have Matt James, we have Decker, we have, um, also F and V, and we have the engineer. So we've all been working together. Yes, and I, I, I can handle things. And I'm learning a lot, and we are working really well together, and I've been studying a lot. Okay, any other reports, let's go, let's go on to.
I got, I have a couple of reports.
Uh, David, um, for.
Parks and L P C.
Okay.
I have to apologize to the board, I didn't get my written, and to the township, didn't get my written comments in time. But, um, Parks meeting had, uh, a resident to the west of Van Curler at for, if it would be, if the Parks Department would open up a entrance to Van Curler from the west, from that neighborhood, Pineview neighborhood, I think, and, um, we discussed it and we kind of explained how that probably wouldn't go over very well in the neighborhood with parking and, and issues, and plus, um, it would open up another entrance to the park, and I don't think the Parks Director wanted to do that, so, um, but we explained that situation to her. Um, there also, we had a subgroup or a breakout group to work on a connection from Van Curler to the Metro Park, which is across the street, across Huron River Drive, so that's going to be a, we'll probably have to be have one of those, um, blinking lights to get across. Um, and also, we're meeting, uh, we're starting, we're just in the initial phases of rewriting the, um, I hope this is the last time I have to say it, the PPP ordinance and the process and the charge for that committee. Um, it will, hopefully it will now be called the Parks Committee and the Parks Department. The L P C, uh, Pam, Pam Boyd brought some in, in, information regarding the property across the street from where her relatives live on Baker, um, across from our preserve there. There has been some tree removal, but it, it's not on township property, it's on Mr. Lutton's property, and he's been removing trees. We're not, don't really know why, but it's his property, so, um, I'm not sure if he has a tree management plan, um. If he does, and if it's within management, that's fine, but if he doesn't, that could be a violation of our tree ordinance, um, I haven't checked on that. Um, but there's also an issue of flooding, apparently there's a rain or a storm sewer that runs through Pam's, is it, I think, son or daughter, well, her relatives', um, backyard. And in the wintertime, apparently there's, that water flows under or should flow under Baker and into the, into the park, and I guess in the wintertime, that perhaps that pipe freezes and there's some flooding back, so she brought that to our attention. I'm not sure what we can do about it, but I think at one point in time, I know we were thinking we might be buying some of that property, and if Mr. Lutton's making changes to it, that may affect our, what we want to do with that. Um, I wanna thank Ryan for being at the L P C, um, meeting to discuss our investments, I think it was very informative. I was not at the meeting, but I did watch the video, so I could report, um, but it was very interesting. Um, and at that meeting, we also were discussing the standards, uh, that we use to score properties and whether or not, how we, how we decide which ones, how they rank, which ones we should buy. Barry brought up the fact that farmers are still not getting their payments for the tax credits they're due, and some of these payments are are upwards of ten thousand dollars a year, and so for a farmer who's a small businessman or woman, that's a significant chunk of their in, in income. And this is all due to a change that was made to, uh, I think it's, um, farmland, um, it's the P A one sixteen, some change was made to that, and without the knowledge of half the people in Lansing, and it's come as quite a surprise. Um, so, uh, but that's all.
David, that's at, at a state level?
That's a state level, yeah, that's state, the state has made changes to their policy. It's a Republican-run state, or at least a Republican-run senate, and house, right?
Isn't this why we have lobbyists?
Yes, yeah.
David, just to give you some background information, David Lutton had been doing some test well drilling on his property. This is potentially the well that might be used by the city of Dexter if an annexation agreement proceeds, we're, nothing has happened yet with that, but they've done extensive testing of the aquifer under the site where the initial tests were done. Might account, yes, it's on the east side of Baker, so on the west side of Baker, we have the arsenic area, and he is going to be presenting his arsenic mitigation plan to the entire board in a few weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it, Kathy, we'd had it penciled in for June tenth, is that so accurate?
Cause I know it is, he has contacted me and he wants to meet this Friday, so I'm meeting with him here at Township Hall on Friday. He's going to give me an update, I don't know what that means.
Very on brand.
The, uh, and what he's doing across the street might be just preparing a path for the equipment to come in to do his remediation. Cause it's a significant, it's like ten feet wide.
We don't know what type of remediation, he's calling it mitigation.
I'm just guessing.
The type of mitigation he's gonna propose, the extent of it, we know nothing yet about it. So, I don't know.
Okay, good.
Kathy, do you have a, a report?
No.
I submit my written report.
Okay, thank you, board.
I wanna thank the treasurer for his written investment report, and make sure everybody notes that we are making three plus percent interest on our investments, I wanna thank the people of Silo Township for electing a treasurer, um, who makes good investments of public funds, and you're doing a great job, Ryan, thank you for getting that all straightened out.
Thank you.
Um, I wanna thank everybody who came out to the Popkin dedication ceremony, I think there were a hundred people there. Um, it was really nice, um, there is, um, uh, five, five board members there. Um, thanks to Chris Chang for showing up, the Park staff, um, it was a really nice event, and there were even some, a, a lot of community members who reached out afterwards and really appreciated it, so.
Dusty Ryser, do you have a report?
I want to report that, um, there was an incident in my neighborhood with respect to water, uh, they flush pipes and sometimes the flushing of the pipes, uh, disrupts, um, rust that's long in the pipes, and it creates a cloudiness, and, uh, my wife and I noticed, like, why is the toilet brown, I thought you flushed it, I didn't use it. So after going back and forth and re-flushing and finding out that it was gray water, um, I reached out to, uh, Brandon McNeil and his crew came out there that night and did a really nice job, I, I, uh, contacted you, uh, Kathy, no, I don't know if it was in your neighborhood or not, but, uh, there, Brandon said they were getting a lot of calls from the area, and they, you know, they, they came out, they did it, and they answered residents' questions, so they did a really nice job responding to, I thought it was a a stressful situation for some.
Yeah, that's at the, the end of the line for water. So W I S D gets a lot of groundwater as well, or rusty water, but yeah. Yeah, yep, um, hmm, no public hearings. Closed session is moved to the end, let's move on to new business, so this is the O one possible action ordinance amendments to chapter twelve dash two peddlers and solicitors and to chapter eighteen dash two fire prevention and protection.
So I wanna thank the chief, I wanna thank township attorney Mariah Fink, um, this was tabled from the last meeting to just get it right. Um, ordinance amendments to do two different sections to clean up the process of the peddlers, um, to make sure that we're recovering all of our costs um, and, and simplifying it, but also, um, to address some open burning issues and importantly, to properly regulate food trucks, so I'll turn that part over to the chief.
Thank you, board, there's really three things, uh, in here that we're changing the fire code. Uh, first and foremost, um, the state has adopted the International Building Code twenty twenty-one edition. Uh, and the companion document to that is the International Fire Code twenty twenty-one edition. Uh, we were previously, the state had adopted I F, I B C twenty fifteen, we had I F C twenty fifteen. Since they've upgraded, uh, we, we tend to follow them so that the code references are the same and everything works together. So that's the main, um, component, uh, in here. Uh, and along with that, I, on page one, you can see, uh, we strike, this is a copy of our section eighteen ordinance, we strike twenty fifteen and add twenty twenty-one edition. Uh, some of those, uh, sections, uh, that we reference in here have changed, so you'll see where attorney Fink has uh, crossed out section one oh eight point one and put in, uh, section one 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 point one, because that's what's, uh, the correct code reference, uh, for the twenty twenty-one I F C. Uh, issue two, uh, that we have, um, twenty fifteen I F C, uh, did not regulate food trucks at all. Um, they were kind of a new thing coming out probably around that time, uh, if you've been out to any place, um, in a bigger city, these things are everywhere, um, and essentially they are commercial kitchens uh, with hood exhaust, with suppression systems and with gas piping, that someone puts on a trailer and drives down the road. So, it, it, they're, they're fraught with hazards, um, and the building code, or the, I'm sorry, the fire code is just now catching up to that. So we're actually asking the board to adopt some sections from the I F C twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, yeah, twenty twenty-four, which are specific to food trucks, and that would be the definition. Um, on page three of this amendment, you've got some definitions there, uh, food service vehicle. And on, uh, page five of the document, um, basically it's saying we're adopting I F C twenty twenty-four where it relates to mobile food preparation vehicles, uh, that'll give us the authority, uh, to inspect them um, and mandate changes if they're going to operate in Silo Township. Additionally, uh, your fire marshal, Assistant Chief Sears is working with, uh, fire marshals from throughout the county on a, uh, consistent plan, so that if one jurisdiction inspects it, we're inspecting to the same standards, and we will honor their inspection. So if this food truck happens to be in Ipsy Township, it gets inspected and their fire marshal says, yep, I, we're good, we inspect to the same standards, we don't need to look at it again since they're mobile. Uh, and this is part of a bigger picture, this really came out of the west side of the state, there are several municipalities out there doing the same thing, uh, so we could potentially get a food truck from, say, Kalamazoo that has a, a certified fire inspection sticker. We know that, that, that department inspects to our standards, so we'll say, okay, you're good to operate here in Silo. Uh, and last but not least, um, we've had, uh, uh, we need an amendment to our burn ordinance. Um, we had a resident that, that brought some issues to us, uh, related to changes in the state law and, um, how that reflected in not only our burn permits, but in our ordinance, and this amendment would change that as well. Uh, on page three, we're really adding, uh, a definition of yard waste, and this is taken from the state law. It's, it's put out there, uh, we basically mirrored this after what's existing in Silo Township now, uh, and the board, this is a policy decision, can change anything they want to. But for consistency, we've said, I think the board made a conscious decision, last time we talked about this, to, to allow some things and not allow other things, so we mirrored that in this language, uh, while making sure we're compliant with state law. So if the board were to adopt this as it is, uh, we would still not allow burning of yard waste, uh, that, that is only grass clippings and or leaves, those would not be permitted. Uh, but residents would still be able to clean up some stuff from the yards, trees, brush, as long as they're small, on, I think, the, the four feet in length and less than two inches in diameter, it's still burn those items.
I have a question, um, excuse me, on page four, on the E, section three oh seven point one one, prohibited open burning. Number three says open burning of leaves and. Number three says open burning of leaves and grass is prohibited. Open burning of other yard wastes defined above is, is allowed with a permit. And I'm assuming that defined above is.
If you go back one page.
Page three.
Yep, if you go up, there's going to be an underlying section that says yard waste.
Yeah.
That's where that would be, those items excluding leaves and grass clippings would be allowed.
Okay, so do grass clippings need to be included in yard waste because leaves are not? And that, that's where it was a little confusing. Open burning of leaves and grass is prohibited, but open burning of other yard waste. But then it lists grass clippings. Does that have to be in there?
I think attorney Fink copied this directly from the state law.
Oh, it's really.
Well, so, so the idea is that that is the definition from the state law, the yard waste definition. So what we're saying is that's the definition we're going to use, but there are two items in that definition that you cannot open burn in Scioto and that would be leaves and grass. Anything else in that definition? So vegetable, other garden debris, shrubbery, brush, tree trimmings, less than four feet in length and two inches in diameter would be allowed with a permit.
Um.
Okay. Okay.
What about a backyard fire and a fire pit that might have a log that's bigger than two inches?
So that, that's not covered under open burning?
Okay.
Yep, three different types of fire. I'll briefly open burning. That's bigger than three feet, taller than three feet to get rid of junk. That's, yep, that's what you need a permit for. You can get a permit for a bonfire, which is a similar fire, but for ceremonial purposes. And then you can also, without a permit, have a recreational fire. That's a smaller than three foot, smaller than two feet tall in your backyard. And then, and again, no permits needed for that.
And then there's the burning of prairies.
Burning of prairies is, and that still exists in the IFC. It's section 307.2. That still allows prescribed burning for managing prairie or woodlands or stuff like that.
And it's here actually too, as an exception. The prohibited open burning, prescribed burning for the purpose of reducing the impact of wildland fire. Well, it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chief, regarding the food trucks with the inspection sticker?
Yes.
How, what is the duration of that spec, is that annual, is that monthly, is that?
Yep, so we're, we're working annually along with the sanitarium from the health department. Those have to be inspected by the health department to be issued a certificate to operate. The, they're saying now, I'll give you this as soon as the fire department's inspected you. So they'll go to any of the participating fire departments. We've held two food truck rallies, one here in Scioto, one in Ipsy Township where we publicize it, let all of them know and get about six inspectors out there and they run through them stacked right up, one right after the other, bunch of them knocked out. So.
And then the.
One year permit.
And then the food trucks would also get a peddler's permit.
Would that happen at the same time?
I'd assume only when they come to Scioto for an event.
Yeah, so the, the kind of certification by the, by the fire department will be that it's safe for the year period of time. The peddler's permit for the new transient vendor definition would be peddler's permit to do the background check and notify people that they'll be out and about.
How much with the inspection? Do you know the cost?
Well, I don't think we're charging anything for those right now.
Oh, okay.
Once there's an ordinance in place, we can bring a resolution back with any updated fees necessary.
Anyone else?
Right now we are finding pretty substantial issues, wrong gas piping in there, residential gas piping in a vehicle, some real problems, like real safety issues. These things have a history of exploding, so they're, they're dangerous. But once we get them up to code compliance and making sure they're operating correctly, I think after a year or two getting through this, you know, we're telling some, hey, you need to go do this and this. And they're like, I just got a bill for $1,500. Once we get them all in compliance, I think it's pretty easy for us to say, here's a $25 inspection fee now or something like that.
Okay. Nobody else?
I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025 dash 03 Peddlers and Solicitors to amend chapter 12 and ordinance number 2025 dash 05 Fire Prevention and Protection as proposed.
Support.
Motion by Yeaples, support by no.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? None? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, Aurora. Oh two, possible action, approve the job descriptions for fire chief, assistant fire chief, fire marshal, fire investigator and fire department administrative assistant.
Yes. Are there any questions or?
Well, I have, yeah, there's something here. Let me find it.
Presumably the affected folks have read this. I'm, I'm assuming the affected folks have read these descriptions?
Yes.
Okay.
Under the assistant fire chief, fire marshal, and it's the one, two, three, fifth bullet. Excuse me, bullet point from the bottom. Hopefully you have the same page that I do. Says serves as primary fire, excuse me, fire investigator investigating fires and attempting to determine origin and cause. But then we have a fire investigator job description. So wouldn't the fire chief or fire assistant fire, the AC and the slash fire marshal, wouldn't that be inspection and not investigation?
Aurora, I think the chief might have.
I'd love to weigh in on that. Our intent, as we move into the future, is that the assistant fire chief would investigate origin and cause of fires. However, he just got through class two weeks ago. So he doesn't, doesn't have the experience yet. He does have the certification. So in the interim, I am asking that we keep our current fire investigator, Marvin Davis, on until he's ready to, to leave the department and get Assistant Chief Sears the, the opportunity to work with him, get the experience working with him. Until which time is given decides he wants to.
And will, will the AC have enough time for fire marshal, all the inspections, this and everything else he does?
We're going to make it work, yes.
Okay. All right, well, that was my, my question. And, okay, and the other one was, have you discussed this with the employees? And apparently you have. And so the requirements, the education requirements, the employees we have now meet these requirements that are, or is this for future?
I believe they all meet them already, yes.
And that's.
Yes, the fire marshal associate degree.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. He's got a fire marshal associate degree.
Those institute are equivalent for the assistant.
Well, that's it. Those are the, yeah, questions that I had. David, oh, go ahead, Ryan, I'm sorry.
I guess one change I would like to bring up is the fire chief job description. Says reports to township supervisor and director of operations. You currently report to the board, correct, chief?
You're standing, yes.
Okay.
Wait, where is that?
On the fire chief job description.
I'm on the wrong one.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that the fire chief report to the board of trustees.
Yeah.
The nature of the position, it's unlike any other that we have, serves townshipwide, bound by a lot of laws that go beyond the board and needs to have a great deal of independence.
So then, I'm assuming you would provide reports regularly, not just quarterly and.
Whatever the board desires.
If you're reporting to the whole board and not just a few.
Board would like.
Clear?
Sure. A, a couple other proposed edits to these three job descriptions. Well, first, a question. What is the meaning of fire officer? It appears in the position summary of fire investigators that simply the officer in charge?
With each one? By your.
On fire investigator, position summary appears the term, quote, fire officer. What is the meaning of that?
Yeah, that would refer to the officers who, who is in charge of the day-to-day operations and call the investigator in.
Perfect.
Second, fire department administrative assistant. I would suggest a small change to say, to strike receives and processes FOIA, to just say processes FOIA requests, since that has caused some confusion in the community. It's always important at one point to actually receive a request. Further, a fourth bullet point seems to inadvertently jumble the accounts receivable and accounts payable function. So importantly, our fire department administrative assistant does all of the accounts receivable, issuing invoices for the fire services that our fire marshal provides. So if that could just be split out, it looks like maybe that one bullet point could become two. That's okay?
For fire? Would you like me to include for the fire department or for fire?
Sure, you can just say, you know, receives and processes accounts receivable for fire services.
Remove invoices and.
And then the next bullet point, process invoices or whatever you want to say about the AP.
Errors or?
Sure.
Errors, records, yeah.
And then I, I just had a question about these job descriptions. Generally, Aurora, you know, in, in conversations, it's been brought up that there have recently been some employees who have said that they are concerned about using their personnel vehicles because that requirement doesn't appear in a job description. Do you agree it's important to include that requirement? It hasn't appeared in the other ones and, and I don't, I don't think it makes sense, but I wanted to just confirm that altogether here.
No, it's not really outlined in it. It's, it's, if it's, they're required to drive, then it's whatever vehicle is available to them, including their personal. If we need to include that they may drive their personal, personal vehicle, then I can update that.
But could that also be handled in the personnel handbook? Okay. And then the, the other thing is with our current chief, we have an individual employment agreement, which is very, very rare. And so not to have the discussion here now, but I'd like to flag, ask Aurora and the chief to maybe confer with each other about that because I know there were some kind of outdated provisions in that, that I, I want to make sure don't create any inequity for our chief.
So are you suggesting that I have an agreement or to update the agreement?
I would suggest that, that Aurora and the chief talk about it, but I think those two might be options. But, but something that's mutually agreeable to, to address a couple of the issues. I think there's a couple of issues there in the employment agreement that the board would be interested in maybe updating to ensure that the chief has access to all the benefits, all the other employees do.
Absolutely.
John, did you have anything?
No, thanks.
All right, so let's.
Appreciate it.
Well, if we're all set, then is there a motion to?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the attached job descriptions as amended for the authorized positions of fire chief, assistant fire chief slash fire marshal, fire investigator and the fire department administrative assistant.
Support.
Motion by Yeaples, support by Reed.
Let's do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes six, zero. Thank you, chief.
Good night, chief.
Okay, on to oh three, possible action, approve the job descriptions for HR manager and ordinance officer. Project manager was table, postponed to the next meeting.
Provided updated.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Recharge manager.
It's in front of. Yeah. You gave me a copy earlier of the. Does anybody need a copy? Yeah, so what was in the packet, at least what I had printed last week, had the old version and this is the new version. So anybody listening? And we'll update that.
They, anything?
My only question is, well, the project manager job description, but that's been tabled, so we'll wait till next week or next meeting.
That's why. One of the reasons. Trustee Reiser.
With respect to the human resources manager. It, it reports to the board of trustees and can I ask if that's intended to be temporary, permanent? Why to the board? How do you report to seven people rather than to the operations director or office manager coordinator? I mean, that, why is that job so special that it has that direct reporting?
I think it, it was temporary to the board of trustees. Previously it was to the township manager. I'm assuming that this may, this position may report to the director, the operations director.
I think we should set it in this job description for what we want it to be.
Yeah.
I agree.
Is it a matter of confidentiality?
Yes.
Like, I, I, I don't like that you report to the board of trustees because you got it coming to seven people. It just seems like, I don't know.
I, I mean, I will say in, in real life, it's been, I, I will say, like Aurora has been doing so much great work for this township. And I will just, I, I, you know, and it's a, you know, and it's been since, I don't know if it's the stepping up, if it's the Christie and Aurora partnership, if it's the management liaison we have in Ryan, but like Aurora's doing a lot of great work for us. And so I don't want that to go away. Like I would never want a great HR manager to be stifled under an operations director. That said, you know, we want a great operations director too. So I, I, I could go either way on the position. I just would never want something like, you know, HR concerns. I would always want that HR manager to be able to confer with the management liaison from the board or whoever that is, whoever that board liaison is.
I, I can say, working with Aurora though, I don't think that you would have that. She, she can hold her own and she would definitely stick up for herself. If she felt strongly about something. So I mean, it's, yeah.
And I guess, I, I, I appreciate your concern and maybe that's a concern that can be incorporated if it's not already into one of the essential job.
Yeah.
It's communication, the voice, the liaison or the representative. But I think I would move, I don't have to move.
Can we add that right now before you move?
Yes, yes, boss, whatever, yeah, no, that, yeah, I'm kidding, but yeah, number 30. And that would be. Move chart. But, 30.
Well, at the top, it says.
It doesn't, it doesn't say anywhere. Where, where is the interface with the board liaison?
It doesn't say anywhere, uh, where, where is the interface with the board liaison? And it's not there and I, I was, and I was.
I was looking at that and that was my question.
Yeah. And, and I did see that before with our prior manager is a little bit of, um. Stuckness and not getting to the board and I just don't want to replicate that.
Well, a good operations director will be reporting to the whole board. The board and if they're in.
Right, right. And the, in the employee handbook, it does indicate the personnel liaison.
Yeah.
Um, so either I'm comfortable with adding it in here, we want to make sure.
I would like to. And the director, but the operations director will be on that, that personnel committee, right?
That liaisons.
Correct. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I would suggest for thirty, uh, communicates with BOT. Management liaison, HR liaison as appropriate, and what is that?
Yeah, I just don't want her to be reporting to one or two trustees.
Yeah, whatever the language is, we, we came up with the personnel committee and the liaison. So whoever those designees are, I just want to make sure if there's ever HR issues, we need to be able to have a direct connect. In case there's a breakdown with the ops director.
I agree, or you know, if there's, if there's an absence or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I guess, did we ever decide and? That, that clarifies point thirty a little bit, I guess communicates with the board of trustees and management liaison. I guess that's how I would.
But I would move that thirty be added and then along with that, that the reports to director of operations or operations director or whatever.
We've already adopted operations director, who consented. So now we go with the OD.
I guess Aurora, what's your thoughts on that?
On, um.
On, on reports too specifically.
Either, if. If we are adding communicating with board trustee and management liaison, um, as required. Then.
Appropriate.
Right, or as needed.
As, as required, she's got, she's got, it'll be appropriate and that's.
And I'm assuming you would still be reporting, um, quarterly, like the other department heads. I mean, there's things, there's policies you're working on. I mean, as long as it's not an employee issue.
And it's less than quarterly, I think. Um, I have something else for June, um, uh, an HR report, so right. It wouldn't be obviously something that's confidential at all. Regarding the reports too, I'm, I'm okay with. The consensus of the board, either, um, if operations director, that's. And we have number thirty that was added.
Okay.
By, so.
So what is the, the wording of number thirty again? Aurora?
I have, um, communicate with board of trustees and management liaison as required.
Or required or requested?
But it may not be when we request it.
So, um, when she needs to.
Yeah.
I, thank you.
And then reporting to operations director would be the two changes.
We. More good action?
Was there anything else?
I move adoption.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, what if there's a problem? Oh, never mind.
If there's a problem.
With the operations director.
That's why we have the valve that we just added.
Thirty, number thirty. Okay, all right.
I, I move adoption. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, John.
I move adoption of the, uh, job description for the human resources manager as amended tonight.
That's a bar.
Motion by Riser, support by Yapel.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes six to zero.
Ordnance officer.
Yeah, for the ordinance officer, um, the only thing I have. Um, number six says attendance of board of trustees meetings and provides monthly reports to the board of trustees. So that. Kind of sounds like he will be in, um, attending every board meeting. So I suggest to change that to attendance of board of trustees meetings when required. And provides quarterly reports to be in alignment with the other department heads, because Christie, you have the schedule. And, um, he's been reporting quarterly.
The consistency is different depending on the department. We try to get fire in a little bit more often, utilities a little more often. I mean, I know Sean, when he was here, he reported more frequently. It's however often the board wants to see somebody, but if they can work it in.
Does he? Would you have to be here as a person for every report?
No. They can do a written report and if the, you know, if the board wants them to attend, they just need to request it. And we'll, we'll make it happen, but.
I would suggest maybe, um, as, as you did Jillian, attendance of board of trustees meetings when required. And then submit monthly reports to the board of trustees. I think for ordinance violations, having a current list. Because if something blows up in the community, we want to be apprised of it. So I like the idea of a, just submitting the monthly tracking sheet, you know.
Yeah.
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 I mean, with the software that he's using now, that should be pretty easy to pull out.
So I have attendance of board trustees meetings when required and submit monthly reports.
As required or as requested?
As required.
As required. We want people to come to us even when we don't ask them to.
Okay.
And then Aurora will need to let. We'll need to, I was talking to Aurora, we'll need to let him know of any changes so he can.
Right.
Absolutely. So we remind each other. This is why I'm saying it.
Right, yes.
And I just want to flag too, this is, I think, the last job description that appears in our ordinance. As well, and Aurora and Mariah took a look at it and so there's nothing in conflict with what's in our ordinance. But, um, I would suggest for a future board meeting, um, that we consider. Um, as we did with some of the other pieces of chapter one and chapter two that were put in as part of the municide. Um, maybe just repeal it. I, I don't think personally it makes sense to have job descriptions in the ordinance there. Should, should be done at the board table.
Oh. We're good with this one? Is there a motion to approve? Or is it amended?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Reed, support by Yapel.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes six to zero. Um, let's see. I lost it. We're down here. Okay, um, well, I guess that's it for job descriptions. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, thank you Aurora.
Now it's the, um, offer special meeting.
Oh, right, right.
Yep.
Yes.
So what is the proposed date and time that works best for everybody?
I have June fifth. Initially, we set the time from ten AM to five PM, but we could probably move it. Twelve noon, twelve PM noon to five, I think is more than enough time. Um, we, I do know that there is one, uh, trustee that will not be able to attend. So the, we were pretty set on the, on that date, but there is one that.
I have, I have something in Muskegon. And I think I go from ten fifteen to eleven forty-five. And I, I can drive back and listen. No, I can't. Is it open meeting?
Yeah.
Then I can listen to the proceedings and then drive straight here from Muskegon. So, so if, if that's what it is, that's what it is and I'll commit to do that.
I have got the conflict from two PM to three PM. The utilities, we, the city of Anar, and which.
Okay, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing table then for a date. I, I've reserved the date with the candidates also already.
But.
You can listen.
But we have another conflict.
But, but the conflict, what time was that Kathy?
Two to three.
Okay, well, and what is your, what time is your conflict?
I'm available after eleven forty-five. So I'm, I'm available to noon to listen. And then I will drive here. It's a couple hours, so I'll be here at two o'clock.
You'd be here about two thirty, three o'clock based on the distance.
Um, I would just have to verify if, uh, we could move it a little bit later if we had to. So we could, if potentially we, you believe we could. Have this completed in two hours, I could go from three to five then and just let them know it would be three to five.
So Aurora, remind me, um, how many candidates and how long are you allocating for each interview, would you estimate?
There's, there's three. I was anticipating no more than forty to forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's, there was a discussion or. About an open house, so we would just not do that, or we would do that after the five o'clock.
Or we do it on a separate day.
Do you remember when we did the fire chief?
Yes.
And so. If I remember correctly, we, well, I wasn't on the board then, but I was a resident and we interviewed the three and then there was the open house. And that wasn't there a survey by residents?
On a different day.
Oh, was it, it wasn't a different day?
And I think that's important. I mentioned this to Aurora. And as well, when we did the open house for David Rowley, when he was administrator, we had, the board had first selected. I, I think it's a great idea Aurora and I'd love to do an open house, maybe like even tentatively, we could pick a potential. Date for that so that the, um, candidates could be ready. Like if there's something, you know. A day or two out, you know, from there. But first, let's nail down the time for Thursday, the fifth. What is being proposed? Three? Okay, it doesn't sound like, how do we get done by five guys? Who's doing that now?
Three to six sounds reasonable.
There's three of them.
And forty minutes, while it sounds ideal on paper, I know that we hardly ever have meetings on time.
And there'll be a couple of questions. Are you, do you think three to six, we, we would have a good chance of there being available during that window? Okay.
I, I asked them to hold the time through five, so I don't believe through six would be.
And they'll have the morning.
When, when are we going to discuss them as a group?
We would do it at that meeting, I would assume.
After each candidate or at the end?
Aurora?
Either way, either way.
Uh, I, I think we would probably want to do it at the end, so we don't influence the second and third interviews. Just, you're just here and then, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then, okay, what did y'all think?
Yeah, so should we schedule this three to six thirty or three to seven? So if we did forty-five minutes with fifteen minute break. That would give us like three hours and then.
And technically, we won't have an end time. We should, I think we should all set aside three to seven in our own little brains and.
But for them, it would be three to one hour, three to four.
Yeah, but if, if. If, are we gonna have forty minute, you said, or, because we could go three, three forty-five and four thirty with five minute breaks after that forty minute. That, that might be the way to do it, like a forty minute interview with a five minute break. And then if the last one, if it starts at four thirty, that will be done at five fifteen, actually five ten. And then we'd have from five ten to six o'clock to talk about things and then longer if need be.
I guess another point of clarity and a question historically, or, oh, I have to look at our rules of order, but. I'm worried, not worried, but concerned to a point that we will have some form of public comment that may put us off track. Out of this timeframe that we're setting up for ourselves, so just a thought consideration.
It will have to be a special meeting with public comments in the beginning and.
Well, I would, I would actually, I think it's a, a good point, Ryan, and I, I would be prepared to make a motion soon here in which I would. Incorporate in the motion that we just have one public comment period at the end of the meeting instead of at the beginning for this special one.
Out of respect for their schedules and commitment and time.
Correct.
Yep.
We don't want to scare off.
And I don't, I don't know if we'll be making, you know, we may or may not be making, um, decisions, but we'll be making decisions based on the interviews.
Is there a motion?
So I would make a motion to call for a special meeting of the board of trustees for Thursday, June fifth, three PM. For the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of operations director and for the proposed agenda to include only one public comment period at the end of the meeting.
Support.
Okay.
Motion by Flintoff, support by Yapel.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes six to zero. Right, thank you.
Great, great work.
Yeah, thank you.
So Christie, um, agenda oh five, this is.
Yes.
Um, possible action approval of agreement with, excuse me, Neil Miller roofing. Neil Mill, Neil Miller roofing for roof replacement on the silo barn at the corner of Wagner and Silo Church Roads.
Yes. Oh, you. We, well, we've got three bids and his was the lowest bid at twenty-two five. Um, I sent him the proposed contract and just. Told him that I would let him know if the board didn't approve it, but to go ahead and review it and if he was in agreement to. Sign it and send it back and then once the board made its decision, then we would go from there.
All right, I have, um, a couple of questions.
Sure.
And he's been vetted, some, either references or some of his other work.
This is the person that was referred to us by Carol Fletcher, uh, trustee Brandt. Actually took the initial lead on it and met him at the property. He's visited the site and then she. Put me in contact with him to, to work out the rest of the details. I don't have, and I didn't know if the board would approve the lightning rod. I think the board should approve the lightning rod. I have good friends of mine who's Kevin caught fire.
That's what I was gonna, my next question is gonna be, since this was given to us in our packet, has there been any supplemental information? Regarding the likely cost of a lightning rod or price.
I only did a little research online, which. It seemed to vary between five hundred to maybe twelve hundred dollars. Um, I will work with Neil on that and.
If that's the case, should we do a motion for up to twenty-four hundred dollars for a, a roof, um. Re-roofing and optional lightning rod? And if they need more than twenty-four K, yeah.
I did put twenty-four for that.
Okay, great.
I put a little buffer in there.
Okay.
And.
That's efficient, okay.
They, um, based on his, uh, proposal, they were going to neatly stack the debris. In the, in the yard and I said, let's just get a dumpster.
Yeah.
And they can just put it in the dumpster, so that.
Very good, Christie.
Yeah. I don't know exactly what size dumpster. I'll figure that out later, but we can have something dropped off for use.
You need me to make a change to them? Right now it still says.
Oh, it says stack it in there? Okay, yeah, I, I didn't catch that, sorry, so.
Something like if the contractor will place the refuse in the client provided dumpster.
Yeah. Thank you, Mariah.
Does the amount of motion need to say anything subject to approval, subject to review by the, the attorney or just?
Well, the attorney dr- she, she drafted the agreement. I stated that in here.
And, and I think we can all agree that, that we can rely on Christie's discretion about the lightning rod and those details.
We absolutely need that.
Yeah.
There's not a lightning rod?
I, I don't know, but I will say, like I said, friends of mine, last summer, they lost their entire cabin in Canada. The neighbors called and said, your cabin is gone. There was a lightning storm and everything is burnt to the ground, so. But, yeah, but I.
But, yeah, but it's odd that we don't have a lightning rod now.
And, yeah, and typically, even with a roof this long, there's often three, one on either end and one on the other.
Yes.
So and there's.
I did see that online.
And there's a significant cost of copper, because it's a, a hell of a cable that comes down from the roof to the ground, so that's where all the money is, in the copper, but.
If if it turns out to be more than what I anticipated, certainly I'll come back to the board and we can.
Where's Carol Fletcher?
I mean, if you, if you want to bump it up a little bit, just for a buffer, that's what would be.
So I move, well, I'm sorry, David.
Just a minute, John.
Let's wait for Kathy.
My experience with roofing is from the prior millennium, um, and a different state. Um, in other states, we would not be allowed to add a third roof or some of the other things we're doing, but I understand in this particular situation, because of the way he's going to be applying the roof, that we don't have to tear off the first two roofs, because he's been gonna put structure on top of the current roof and attach the new roof to the structure.
And the way to hold it, it'll hold the weight?
Well, that's, that's the question.
That's a good question.
I know.
Um, I mean, this is, this bid is half the cost of everybody else's, because it's half the work. Um, tearing off the roof is 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 a lot of work and repeatedly replacing the sheeting is a big cost and a lot of work. But that's why this price is half.
I.
No, I'm saying, and and what he's doing is probably okay. I'm I'm I was, as I recall, the fellows who who leased the barn said there was a leak in the roof in one of the corners.
Mm-hmm.
Presumably the sheeting or sheathing has rotted away and the roof is leaking there. Putting a new roof on should solve that problem, uh, but I'm concerned that if there's any issue with the soffit or the fascia, which the other bids do cover, his, his bid does not cover, and I'm questioning if he finds it, will he fix it? Or presumably he will fix it and have to come back to us with an updated price. But I have, yeah.
And and I guess, David, I I assure your concern and under J, it says contractor will install the roof in accordance with all applicable codes and will obtain all permits required by law, so the, I I.
I, I think the removal of the roof might be specific to residences, because this is a barn, there may be a difference. Like, because I was talking with a couple of folks about this who know more, who know more about roofing in this millennium and this state than my experience. And I'm told that what he's doing is sufficient. Now, that, that's not what I would do, but that's, and for twenty-two thousand. But the other issue I'm concerned about, he didn't send a picture or even a a part number or a description of the type of roof he's gonna.
I can get that information if you were.
Because there's dozens of types of corrugated, you know, everything from that.
If you want, I can bring this back to the next meeting with the lightning rod pricing and.
And a sample or a picture.
Or specifics on the.
On the roofing material.
Like what it's gonna look like.
It was gonna look.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Because this is our, this is our showcase home.
It's been a long time. We can wait another couple of weeks.
Sure.
Yep.
I move to postpone this until our next meeting, when there's uh information brought back um as to the specifics of the sheathing that's going to be applied and whether, whether it complies is with best practices regarding uh roofing of barns.
Right.
Support.
Oh, go ahead.
Motion by riser, support by Yeaple.
Thank you, John.
Um, let's, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Flintoff, yes? Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven, uh, six zero.
For next meeting.
Six zero.
Yeah, thanks Congress.
Remember that?
Oh, it was within six zero.
Um, next item is O six, possible action approval of claim for payment for attorney fee. Attorney fees related to case number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four F three dash zero two eight dash F Y.
So this is uh the invoices we've received um since our last meeting. Um, one is from March of twenty twenty-five and the other is from April of twenty twenty-five, so um, that would bring us current for all services incurred in the last fiscal year. And um, you'll see that it's resolved, that it's met all the requirements of Resolution twenty twenty-five eighteen, which is the review and the um amount on the payment here, approved for 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 payment, so this would be a approval for twenty-eight thousand nine thirty-six fifty-five.
And just a note is that Dykema has not provided their April. Um, yeah, we're still waiting for their.
This is everything we've received.
Right.
And I guess in a preliminary matter, I would move that Supervisor Carrie be allowed to recuse um herself from voting on this matter for the reasons stated on the record uh or at our meetings, as the past meetings when this topic has come, if she so wishes to recuse herself. Support.
Motion by riser, support by Reed, um, to permit Supervisor Carrie from voting on this matter for the reasons stated on the record. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? The ayes have it, motion passes.
And I would move to approve the resolution to approve the claim for payment for attorney services as proposed. Support.
Uh, motion by riser, support by Reed to approve resolution to approve claim for payment for attorney services as proposed. Any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote. First up, Flintoff, yes? Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Next is payment of the bills. This appears in this order in this way, um, because the proposed claims for payment incorporates the authorized payment we just approved in that resolution. So this would um include the payment for in the check run tomorrow.
So do I need to recuse myself for for this? No, okay.
I, I don't think so. I mean, it's a, it's, it's if the claims are, you know, properly prepared, um, which you know, that they don't, they don't make it to the proposed claims for payment until we believe that they've been through our process, so.
Okay. Um. Was there a motion?
Not yet.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed claims for payment for May twenty-eighth and to receive the prior check run for May fourteen.
Support.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
Motion by Flintoff, support by Yeaple.
Um, let's do a roll call, please.
Flintoff, yes? Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
Can I move that we hear our second public comment before going into our closed session? So that our residents don't have to stick around for ten minutes or two hours, whatever that closed sessions ended up being before coming on tonight's meeting.
Um.
I'm sorry.
Well, there, we do have a possible action regarding priority waste.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we're not going to have action out of either of these, so I would prefer to just continue on as our agenda was adopted.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're dropping our motion, lacking second.
But I guess with that being said, um, are we going to adopt our standard process, even though there's no one physically present of moving physical locations before we make the motion?
I mean, it would be after we make the motion, but I I would recommend that. I I prefer that when we do go into closed session, that the board moves into the small room and then we'll come back here to close the meeting.
Regardless?
Uh, yes, because we, we have the experience, if if we kick people out of the Zoom meeting, they can't come back on for public comment. And so I don't want to prevent them from doing that.
Yeah, we could mute them and for the video.
We, we, we can, I would, it would require Christie to vigilantly be be watching it.
I would prefer that we.
Okay.
And and that's why we started that practice is because it's more prudent.
Is there a motion to do that?
Um.
I move to go into closed session.
What?
Well, I've got a motion here if you want.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would um make a a motion that we go into enter closed session to consult with our township attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the specific pending litigation of the Invent Group LLC, the Township of SiO Board of Trustees, because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of SiO Township as permitted by M C L fifteen point two six eight subsection E.
Support.
One at a time.
Oh.
Um, motion by Flintoff, support by Reed. Uh, this will be a roll call vote. Flintoff, yes? Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero. Question for our township attorney. Since we expect to be going into a second closed session, can we also make that motion at this point? So I would make a motion in relationship to N one, um, that we will be entering closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute as permitted by M C L fifteen point two six H two six eight subsection H. This requires a majority vote. Um, Flintoff, yes? Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
And you know what? I didn't have.
I was gonna say, I would support that. Do you want to redo the vote?
So that'd be a motion by Flintoff, support by Yeaple. Do all six votes still stand?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. The board is now in closed session.
Okay, welcome back. Clerk Flintoff?
I'd like to make a motion to return to open session.
Support.
Motion by Flintoff, support by Reed.
Roll call vote, please.
Flintoff, yes? Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Six zero, motion adopted. I'd like to make a motion to proceed as proposed in closed sessions in the closed sessions held regarding matters N one and O eight.
Support.
Motion by Flintoff, support by Reed.
Roll call.
Flintoff, yes? Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Wait.
Okay.
Motion adopted, six zero.
Christie, is anybody on Zoom?
Oh, yeah, seven. Okay, so you have a, was there a motion for which one was it?
Um, we just adopted a motion to proceed as proposed in the closed sessions regarding both matters.
Okay, yeah, so we keep it. All right, okay, um, well, onto public comment then. Uh, we have a vacant hall here except for the board and our attorney and Christie are at work.
All right. First up is Pat Stein, followed by Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Pat.
Good evening. Congratulations. Can you pardon me?
I just said hi, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I thought you couldn't hear me. Okay. Good evening, congratulations. You have just completed your first six months serving on SiO Township Board of Trustees. It's apparent getting through these six months has been less than smooth sailing for all of you. And a few board members have now been unfairly targeted with unpleasantness during public comments on a regular basis by a select few. Please note, those select few do not speak for all of us. You are appreciated. The strengths and various levels of experience you have brought to this board are appreciated. Thank you for the work you have completed to date in the interest of the residents of SiO Township. As always, my comments stated here tonight are my own, without any input from any board member. Thank you and enjoy the rest of this short work week.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, uh, next up is Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. Um, earlier tonight, uh, Jessica congratulated Ryan on the uh three point seven percent um increase in uh our, our savings and checking. Um, in the financial report, uh, Ryan, I think you should also be praised for the fact that you make uh, being a good treasurer, look easy. Uh, also in the, that financial report is some of the accounts are at four point two percent. I believe there's one that's at like five point two percent, something like that. Most of them are three point seven. I think there's only one or two that are at one percent. But a couple of years ago, you saved us from the Credit Suisse disaster and you have made uh, doing the job as treasurer, look easy. Very well done. Thank you for improving our, our interest rate. Um, for the special meeting, will the resumes and C V's for the applicants, will that be available before the meeting so that those watching um can review that as they're watching it? That's a question.
Yeah.
I believe so.
I have no idea.
That would be an Aurora question.
Yeah.
I did before, but for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were in past years, yes. And then lastly, uh, for the barn roof, um, I helped a friend roof a barn and he used a twenty-four gauge, Christie, you're gonna want to write this down, twenty-four gauge galvalume.
Hey, Rob, can you wait a minute?
Yeah, hold up, go ahead.
I had stolen her pen.
Yeah, I left it in the other room. So twenty-four gauge, go ahead.
Twenty-four gauge galvalume, uh, he got it from a company in Kalamazoo. I will get you that information tomorrow. But um, you don't want to go with something, Menards is pretty thin and you don't want to, you want to be able to walk on it because it's way up in the air. Um, you want it strong for long-term durability. So um, the cheapest option is often the thinnest and you don't want to do that, so I'll get you that uh vendor application tomorrow. Uh, but but make sure it's at least twenty-four gauge so they can walk on it.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
Rob, could you say that it's twenty-four gauge what?
Galvalume, it's galvanized aluminum, I think.
Right.
Or or it's, or it's steel galvanized with aluminum, something like that, but it's Galv, G A L V A L U M.
Oh, interesting.
Thanks, Rob.
And well done tonight, gang. This was your first um meeting of the, of the new era that I hope is beginning. Um, you all worked together. Nobody was cutting anybody off at the knees. Let's keep this up. Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, next up is Paula Bogerson. Go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, earlier in public comment, it was, a mention was made about Kathleen Brants. I read it earlier in the minutes to be okayed. I think the reason why she, uh, her comment, uh, response to comment was because she had written it out. And um, I agree with Pat Stein on her previous comment too. Anyway, have a good night.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak at public comment? Please raise your hand. There's no hand raised.
Hmm, hey. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we missed um board member response.
Turn it down, I move to adjourn.
Okay. Yeah, what is that? Um, what time do we have?
Ten forty.
Okay, um, motion, or we already have the motion to adjourn at ten forty. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? None? Motion passes.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mariah, for coming late and used to have a been guiding us in our closed session.
It's up there.